Seriously? Thanks, the one I always spray in the car. It's the Gu- Ray, it's the Gucci Bowl. It's a good one. No, no, it's, you know, but you, that's what I use it for. Made you step out so you didn't get covered.
It is now seven o'clock, seven PM, and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, March 10th, 2025. Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Jane.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Fazdick.
Here.
Ms. Gens.
We have a quorum. Ms. Fazdick, will you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have one board, our next board meeting will be held on Monday, March 24th. We have one board salute tonight, Ms. Demming.
District 204 students excel in the elementary robotics tournament. The board salutes District 204 elementary school students and staff who recently participated in the robotics tournament this past weekend. We also salute Director of Innovation and Instructional Leadership, Brian Giovanni, for serving as tournament organizer. Congratulations to all the winners of the school excellence awards, judge awards, and the match results. We extend our congratulations to all participating robotics teams and express our gratitude to the Indian Prairie Educational Foundation for their support of the district's robotics program.
Let's have a round of applause for this. Okay, next up, we have our student representative report by Emily Shield from Wobonzi Valley High School.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here again. My name is Emily Shield and I'm here today to represent Wobonzi Valley High School. As a Warrior, I'm proud to report that our Wobonzi community continues to thrive and provide many outstanding experiences to our students. We have a few giant successes with clubs and activities. BPA has qualified and is sending 62 students onto Nationals. This is more than any other school in the area. Our Model UN took top honors at their MUNUC competition with over 60 students taking home delegation recognitions. Wobonzi Valley Chess, while we went into the state tournament with the number one seed, we were unpleasantly surprised with a loss to Walter Payton Prep, which landed us in fifth place overall, the top finisher in the DVC. Out of 119 points, a spread of 2.5 points separated the top five schools. We're proud of our team. Scholastic Bowl is showing some strong results this season. This past Saturday, they won the 41st Annual Illinois Masonic Tournament. With that league, they are the Class 3A State Champions. Overall, activities and clubs this year had over 1,200 involved in our 60 activities and clubs. In terms of athletics, Wobonzi Valley Winter Athletics completed another successful season. Postseason accomplishments included four DVC conference champions, two IHSA regional championships, one IHSA sectional championship, and an IHSA super sectional championship. Girls Bowling completed the season on a high note by repeating as DuPage Valley Conference Champions. Girls Gymnastics also completed the season on top as DuPage Valley Conference Champions, their first conference championship since 2012. Our Boys and Girls Basketball Programs completed their season with an unbelievable 62 and 5 combined record. The Boys Basketball Team completed their season with a 31 and 3 record and were repeat DVC Conference Champions. The Warriors hosted the IHSA Regional and won their second straight Regional in a row by beating Niqua Valley 70 to 52. Girls Basketball completed their second success, completed their successful season with a 31 and 2 record and also won their second straight DVC Conference Championship. In addition, the Girls won the IHSA Regional, Sectional, and Super Sectional for the second year straight. The spring season has officially begun and we have seen just under 700 athletes register and trying out the sports that we offer. This week, Boys and Girls Water Pole will begin competition in the pool. We look forward to watching all of our spring athletes shine. Go Warriors! Moving on to academics, in early February, the Counseling Department hosted the high school and beyond. This was an evening event with many sessions to choose from in regard to opportunities throughout high school and planning for post-secondary education and training. AP testing registration recently closed. This year, we will have 1,234 students taking 2,307 exams. This is an increase from last year of over 100 students and over 300 exams. That's all for the Wobonzi Valley Board Report. Thank you, and as always, go Warriors!
Thank you. Next up is our school spotlight, and it's Still Middle School today. We'll have a presentation from Kimmer Cornish, Patty Brand, Ryan Shurshin, and Lily Kaler.
Good evening, and first of all, thank you to Dr. Tally and the Board of Education for providing this wonderful privilege to all of us to spotlight some of the great things that are going on at Still Middle School. I'm Kimmer Cornish, and I'm here today with my amazing Assistant Principals Patty Brand and Ryan Shurshin, and our eighth grade student, Lily Kaler, who is also a member of our Principal's Advisory Team. We would like to take this opportunity to spotlight some of the things that we do at Still to support our core values of spirit, community, and excellence. At Still, we think it's very important to create a collaborative and supportive environment for our students, staff, and community. Opportunities for students and staff to demonstrate our three core values include our Student of Distinction nominations, our Spirit assemblies, and student and staff positive referrals, which recognize students and staff who go above and beyond the expectations and exemplify our core values. We are very proud of all of the opportunities that we have at Still Middle School for our students to have a voice in all of the things that we do to improve each and every year.
One way we do this is by having a Principal's Advisory Leadership Team that is broken up into two subcommittees, which meet multiple times each school year. One is our Student Equity Subcommittee. That's the one that I lead. That meets to provide student input and collaboration in celebrating and supporting all students at Still. I would say our biggest highlight this year is we ran an amazing multicultural night that was, we hosted in January. It's our second annual, and it went really well.
Our second Subcommittee is actually our Student School Improvement Subcommittee, where we work with our students to kind of learn about the school improvement planning process, as well as the goals that we have set aside for Still. We've been looking at long-term goals, and we work with the students to actually make sure that they have input in what we do every single day at Still. And I'm very proud to be able to announce that we have Lily Kaler here, who has been a part of our Student School Improvement Planning Committee for the past three years. So she's kind of stuck with me working on this committee. So she's going to talk a little bit about what we have accomplished so far.
Hi, so I, like Mr. Shurshin said, I've been a part of the SIP Committee for three years. And when I was in sixth grade, we made a presentation to present to the staff members about what we think that they are doing great on and what we think that they can improve on. And then this year, we made a presentation to present to the students of Still about the Five Essential Survey, which we just took a couple weeks ago. And we rewrote some of the SIP goals so that they could understand them and try to work to meet them. So we presented to the students that they would have a better understanding of the Five Essential Survey. And right here, we have a picture of last year's, um, last year's, uh, last year's results. And this is a direct slide from what we presented to the students. And so, we have a very strong category in involved families, and then the other four, effective leaders, collaborative teachers, ambitious instruction, and supportive environments are all in the strong category, which is great. We hope to improve upon them this year to see Still be even better.
Thank you, Lily. The final thing that we would like to highlight is we really think that having all of that student voice and having so many of our different subcommittees, as well as our families, be a part of things at Still has helped to give us our exemplary Illinois summative designation this year, which puts Still in the overall performance the top 10% of the schools in the state of Illinois. As well as earlier this year, we had to complete all of our documentation for our redesignation for our Illinois Horizon Schools to watch, and we were told that we have been re-designated. We don't have all of that final paperwork yet, but we had so many of the students on our different committee present to these groups, as well as parents. So those are some of the amazing things that have been going on at Still this year, and we just wanted to highlight some of them. And we thank you so very much for allowing us to come in today.
Thank you so much. It's, uh, it's always like thrilling to hear from the schools and the excitement that's going on. And I love the committee that you have with the students providing their voice into important issues in your school. So congratulations, Lily, for being on that for three years. So thank you so much for sharing.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, tonight, we have no public comment. We had no one sign up, so we're going to move right on to the consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie community. There's still time for you to get tickets for the IPF Breakfast that will be held on Tuesday, March 18th, from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM at White Eagle Golf Course. We are excited about the opportunity to inform our community about the wonderful things that IPF does for our school system. We will have students performing at the event as well. You can find more information on the IPF website. You have until midnight tomorrow to buy your tickets. On Saturday, our third annual Mental Health Symposium was held at Matia. We had more than 600 people attend the event with more than 120 students participating. I am thankful for the collaboration with Naperville 203, Leighton Warrenville District 200, East Aurora, West Aurora, and Las Uigo Districts. Their engagement in the symposium helped us to spread the great information and opportunity to the larger community. I want to thank all who helped to create this year's program to include Ms. Dawn Fortner, Ms. Lisa Berry, Ms. Karen Miller, Ms. Jeannie Dyna, Ms. Janine Wang, Ms. Emily Bolger, and Mr. Caden Nylin. The month of March is Women's History Month. This is an opportunity to celebrate the accomplishments of women in helping to shape our country and the world. Additionally, March is Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Signed into law by President Reagan in 1987, this month brings awareness about the daily obstacles those with disabilities face in achieving full inclusion. This month also celebrates the accomplishments of those who are differently abled, have made in our lives. Schools in their own ways have been celebrating both these events. I remind parents to complete the Five Essential Surveys. Schools need 20% of their parents to complete the survey in order for the schools to receive survey results. Results are used by schools as part of the school improvement process. Right now, I applaud White Eagle, Graham, and we heard earlier, Still Middle School, for having more than 20% of its parents completing the survey. I'm going to give you exact numbers right now. White Eagle has 41%. Graham has 34%. And Still Middle School has 31%. That was as of, uh, last week. So those probably have gone up, and I applaud those schools for making that happen. Parents, you have until March 28th to finish the surveys. And finally, before I return the meeting back to Ms. Donahue, I would like the Board to approve the appointment of Mr. Patrick Rowley as the new Principal of Gregory Middle School effective July 1, 2025. Mr. Rowley will be replacing Ms. Leslie Mitchell, who will become the new Principal of Hill Middle School, July 1st. Mr. Rowley currently serves as an Assistant Principal at Gregory. Before he joined us last year, he was Director of Educational Services, Grade 6 through 12, for five years at Cayland School District 302. He was also Principal of Cayland McDole Elementary School for five years. Mr. Rowley has a passion for creating positive working and learning environments and wants to ensure all students know that they can depend upon him to create a welcoming environment. Ms. Donahue, I will now turn the meeting back to you.
Right. I need a motion to approve Patrick Rowley as the Principal at Gregory Middle School as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Patrick Rowley as Principal of Gregory Middle School as presented.
Is there any discuss- oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Motion passes. As, um, we always like, come up and introduce who you have with you and...
Thank you very much. I have a bunch of arms.
Yeah.
I'm still new.
There you go.
Play that card as long as I can. Thank you so much. I'm beyond excited for the opportunity to continue to lead at Gregory. I am here with some family and some very, very supportive friends. My wife, Jennifer, is here with our three girls, Ashlyn, Harper, and Sydney. So they are doing a wonderful job on their best behavior back there, and some really, really supportive friends that came out because they know how much this means to me. So thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to the years to come.
Thank you so much. Congratulations. Now I need a motion for approval of the Consent Agenda Items E through N.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items E through N as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Jeannie, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. Next, we move to our action items. I need a motion and second to approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Indian Prairie Educ- Education Association and the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education as presented.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Indian Prairie Education Association and the Indian Prairie School District Board of Education as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Do you want to say a few words about what this is?
We can make Mr. Hillman say a few words.
It was interesting. He asked me this morning, do I need to be at the meeting? And I was like, well, you can just be waiting in the back room. So, Mr. Hillman, you want to come forward? It is all about our conferences that we have and parent-teacher conferences, so he can explain that.
Yeah, it's nice to tell people what we're voting on.
So the first part of this, the first action item that you have in front of you is the Memorandum of Understanding. And what that is, is in the contract, we have delineated when it is that we have parent-teacher conferences. Based on feedback that we received from families, also from teachers, probably even from some members of the Board, there was a want to be able to explore a different time to have parent-teacher conferences. So we have done that. This is following the same type of arrangement that we have for the 25-26 school year. You also did a Memorandum of Understanding at that time in agreement with the, with the association for that. And this is very similar to it. It has one notable exception, which is that instead of just looking at the month of October for the fall conferences, we're also including the first week into November, and that has to do with when it is that we have a major election. And it just simply allows us to have a little bit more flexibility for families and for staff, and made some common sense to put it in that, in that, in that realm. So this part is just simply to approve the fact that we can change the conferences. Then the next part, you'll be asked to approve the school calendar based on those changes.
Okay, so stay up there for that.
Not a problem.
Okay, so, um, I, um, Jeannie, I need a roll call.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
And Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. Now I need a motion and a second to approve the 2026-2027 school calendar as presented.
I move that the Board approve the 2026-2027 school calendar as presented, Board Policy 620 school calendar and day.
I second.
Any discussion? I think it would be helpful to just say a few words.
For this one, what happens is that the Board of Administration, along with the association, meet. We end up developing two calendars, a calendar option A and a calendar option B. Both of those two options are done collaboratively, and we then provide them to the Board of Education for feedback. At that same time, we also then presented the option A and option B to the Indian Prairie Parent Council Group, and they provided us feedback as well. Based on that feedback, there was a change in option A and option B that was developed, and I worked with the association to ensure that that was, they were in agreement with that. And then we did ask staff members to take a survey that looked at option A and option B and provide us feedback on that as well. Option B was the overwhelming choice at 65%. And what that essentially does is that is the option that does take one of the parent-teacher conference dates and puts it on a Monday night. So that way, the following Tuesday during the election, students will have off, and we will also have a SIP date on that day. So students will end up not being in school on Monday and Tuesday, but it, to us, made sense not to have them come for Monday and then have the Tuesday off and, and do it in that way. So it, again, avoids the awkward middle of the day, middle of the week day off. That was the, essentially, the only differences between the two options. Initially, the two options did have a difference in one of the options finishing after Memorial Day Weekend, but only for one student day of attendance, and IPPC told us that that was silly. And so they asked us to make that change, and so we did, and that is the calendar option that you have before you for approval.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay. Jeannie, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Fazdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work. Yeah, thanks. We'll now have a presentation from Dr. Christina Cepio, Sally Osborn, and Lindsay Schm- Kewitz.
Someone must have told you we like props.
Good evening, Board of Education members, Dr. Tally and the District 204 community. Tonight's Student Services Update is aligned with Board Policy 6120 regarding the education of students with disabilities and the Strategic Plan Priority 1, Focus on Student Development. This evening, I am joined by Sally Osborn, Principal of Prairie Children Preschool, and Lindsay Schimkowitz, one of our Assistive Technology Specialists.
The rest of our team.
And the rest of the team?
This is Karen.
Karen Bossinga, Assistive Technology Specialist.
Kristen Zamuda, Assistive Technology Specialist.
The purpose of tonight's presentation is to update the Board and community on the supports available to our students with diverse needs. It's also to report on the progress made by students using some of the targeted, alternative curricular and technology-based resources. Finally, we will outline future goals and next steps. As far as our fast facts, our December Child Count, which is always a year behind, is that we have 3,107 special education students. In our preschool program, we have 724 students. Our STEPS Program for Young Adults has 104 young adults. Our out-of-district students number about 140 students, and we have one student in residential placement. Our disabilities, our largest disability categories are autism, specific learning disability, and speech. Speech and social work remain as the services with the highest asset, access, and our district percentage is at 11%. The state is at 16%, and the national norm is at 15%. Our largest demographic groups are students that are white, Asian, Hispanic, and African-American. And this year, we were able to resolve all disputes with parents in partnership with them and did not have to access the due process hearing process. The targeted supports available to our students include our board-certified behavior analyst consultants, of which we have eight full-time staff. They are both a programmatic support in our self-contained classrooms, as well as support on a referral basis. We also have targeted, alternative curricular supports in the areas of ELA, math, and SEL. For students who either cannot access the general education curriculum or need some extra support, we have supports for their needs. RAP services are those provided by a licensed clinical social worker who partners with parents to provide continuity of care between home and school. By using the same strategies, language, and systems, the students benefit from a universal approach to their learning and any needed supports for their behavior. Our BSAs, Behavior Support Assistance, support the BCBA's in providing behavioral support in the classroom. On days in which the BCBA is out of the building, the BSA is there for classroom support. Our CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistance, also have been a wonderful source of classroom support for those students who need a higher level of attention in the skills related to daily living. This support is typically reserved for our students who are more medically challenged. We also have assistive technology, which Lindsay will outline later in this presentation. You can see from our enrollment changes that we are making slow but steady growth. It should be noted that District 204 is a destination district due to the inclusive nature of our education that is provided, and many parents tell us that they have moved here for the inclusive and robust nature of the special education services. By race and ethnicity, you can see that our Asian and Hispanic populations remain relatively stable, but there are some fluctuating numbers in our white and African-American populations. By disability category, you can see that our number of students on the autism spectrum continues to increase. Our second-largest disability category, specific learning disability, has remained relatively stable. I will now turn it over to Sally to, for an update on our preschool population.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to let me speak about preschool to you. I thought it would be best to start out with some numbers, because we've grown over the years. We have 27 classrooms at three sites. Here at Shoreline, we have 19 classrooms. At Graham Elementary School, we have six classrooms. And at Georgetown Elementary School, we have two classrooms. So we've really grown. As Dr. Cepio said, we have 724 students enrolled as of December 20th, 2024. And then, just a breakdown of students that are in our classrooms, we have 266 students who attend, who pay, their parents pay tuition. As a community student, we have 266 students who attend because they are students who have an, who have an individual education plan. Then we have 131 students who attend through our grant program. I went and pulled some updated numbers just to let you know, because we're always growing. And as of 2/28/25, we were up to 745 students enrolled at the preschool. So we grow about 16 to 18 students a month. Also want to point out that we have quite a large population of students whose primary language is not English. 57% of our student population is, English as a second language. And we have over 45 languages spoken at the preschool. I did take a, last glance with my EL teachers, and we were up to 58 actual languages. And some of our common languages are Arabic, Gujarati, Hindi, Mandarin, Russian, Spanish, Tamil, Telugu, Urdu, and Uzbek. So we've really increased in terms of the number of students and families who are attending. I always like to highlight staff at the preschool, because we're quite large, and I really don't think the rest of the districts knows how large we are. We have 66 certified staff, so teachers, speech-language therapists, social workers, school psychologists, nurse. We have 65 classified staff, which are teacher assistants and our secretarial staff. And then we have nine non-bargaining staff, our OTs and our PTs. I also like to point out for our teachers, which is different than the rest of the district, our teachers are duly certified, or sometimes duly certified with another endorsement, in that they are able to teach general education, special education, and then English as a second language. in that they are able to teach general education, special education, and then English as a second language. So just want to shout out to staff because I couldn't do that without you. Just wanted to share some fun facts. So if you haven't been at the preschool, all the classrooms at the preschool are an animal mascot. So originally, all the animal mascots were supposed to be animals on the prairie, except we grew so fast that we had additional animals. And so, for example, we have rooster and that was never on the prairie, right? Interestingly, we do have a lot of students come back. Sometimes I've had high schoolers come back in the summer and they remember the mascot name. And they often remember where the classroom is located as well, so it's really nice. The other thing, another fun fact about the preschool is that if you've been here, you've seen the playgrounds outside. So we have six playgrounds at the preschool that were all developed to focus on specific motor skills. And we're super excited because this summer, we're getting new playgrounds, so thank you for that. And then at the main campus, again, you might have seen this, we have a striped bicycle track in the back where students ride bicycles. And this is really nice because a lot of our kids come to us and have not had any experience riding a bike or riding a trike. And so we really have a very robust, kind of like motor curriculum for our kiddos. Instructionally, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, we have seven units of study based in the Illinois Early Learning and Development Standards. We rotate through them every other year. The nice thing about having those standards in our curriculum, with those standards, they're nicely aligned right with the kindergarten standards. So the outcomes that we're looking at are similar to outcomes when kids start kindergarten. We also use the SEL curriculum of Second Steps, which is a little bit of a change for us. This, I think, is our second or third year using it. The nice thing again about this is that we're directly aligned with what the rest of the district is using. So it's a nice transition again for kiddos. And then finally, we are an IMTS's pilot school. So we're working towards high-quality, tier-one instruction for all students. Tier-one, tier-two targeted small group instruction and then tier-three individualized intensive support. And just lastly, and I know that I got a board salute for, we got a board salute for this early in the year, but every three years, we're monitored through the Illinois State Board of Ed because we receive funding through the preschool-for-all grant. And so the monitoring is a three-week process, which is very intense. They're looking at our administrative processes as well as our classroom environment. We were just visited November twenty twenty-four. And I'm happy to report that we received the gold circle of quality based on our monitoring results. So this is the highest quality level preschool can receive. So the gold circle really means excellence in teaching and learning, family and community engagement, leadership and management, and qualifications in continuing education. So that is what I have for you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Lindsay.
Okay, and our team here, Kristin.
Hi. So our Assistive Technology Department does many things. So I'm going to do the introduction part first. You met all of us. We also have a third team member. We are three and a half, I like to say, I'm halftime. We have two full-time AT specialists and then who is not here today is our technician who is full-time. And our technician is a twelve-month employee. And she does our ordering, the budgeting, repair, and then management of our devices. And we need her, she is out on leave right now and we feel every moment she is gone. So she is just as valuable as those of us sitting here. And so with all of us, right, we do some important jobs. We support all of our students pre-K to through transition. And that includes our students that are out of district. We also support their AT needs and consult with their teams. And then we collaborate with a lot of people. And that includes home teams, so families, the students themselves, vision itinerants, right? IT, because IT and AT go hand in hand but are not synonymous, believe it or not. Those requests don't always go to the right place. And we also work with adaptive PE. So we are always trying to see how we can make the school environment accessible for all students. And there's lots of ways that we can help. So that access to environment, we manage online resources, we do a lot of trainings. We have online trainings that are live, we have self-paced trainings, we do trainings in KICUP for staff, we do things at Embrace, we're all over the place because we're really motivated to help all of our students achieve.
Okay, I just thought I would make sure that we reference IDEA because we come out of IDEA. And so if I was reading what assistive technology is defined as via IDEA, it is any item, piece of equipment, or product, system, whether acquired commercially, off-the-shelf, modified, or customized, that is used to increase, maintain, or improve functional capabilities of a person with a disability. So it is extremely broad, as you can see by some of the examples we brought today. This is just a little smidge of what assistive technology can cover. In fact, in our district, there are a lot of things that we provide for students that are assistive technology that don't come from our department. So we usually consider assistive technology in a range from low-tech to high-tech. So we brought some examples of some of those things today. Low-tech can be something as simple as a slant board to help with someone with writing. It can be as simple as a pencil grip. Sorry, fun. It can be paper-based picture and visual supports. So one of the examples we have here is a communication book for students who have challenges using their speech for communication. Another example of that, we have right up here in front. These are actually, they're called core vocabulary boards. And they are, if you see on those lovely playgrounds downstairs at the preschool, they are posted zip-tied, they're hanging on pretty well through the winter. They are zip-tied to the fences so that our students have access to words and communication throughout their day, even on the playground. And so that is a low-tech version of that, this board here as well. And then we move into kind of the center there. Those are mid-tech things, those are things that are usually battery-operated. And a few examples we have here, this is also for someone who would have challenges using their speech. They're single message or a few messages recorded on the device with someone's voice. They're called a Big Mac and a step-by-step. So you want to, this one is programmed, I forget what it's programmed for. This one is counting, so in a sequence. So if someone's working on counting, they can press that button and it would, that would be how they participate in accounting activity. We have, oh, it's go, it's go. So someone might use that in PE to stop and go, might be something for turning pages of a book or directing an action if something was reported for go. We also brought some adaptive scissors for our students who have challenges, fine motor challenges, allowing them to maybe cut paper. And we also have the switch here, it's called a proximity switch. So for some of our students who can't use pressure to depress a switch, all you have to do is get really close to it. Some of our students use their heads, some of them use their hands, but they don't have to actually press, use pressure for this particular switch. So it's kind of unique. But paper would go in there and an adult or a peer could hold a piece of paper in there and the student could turn it on using the switch. Let me see what else I have. Another thing that we have in our department that we would consider mid-tech would be this item here. This is called a pouring cup. It is used in many, many different ways. We have lists of ways that you could use it. However, a lot of people like to use it for cooking activities or science in terms of measuring. It does pour, so we turn it on with the switch and it turns and it pours. Did you break it?
Oh, try cutting.
A lot of those do have Velcro, so we can wash them if we put, yeah. I hear the scissors going. Yeah, it's pretty neat, huh? So our student would turn on the scissors and someone else would help guide the paper. So those are things that we have adapted. And then we move into some of our high-tech things, which are all the way to the right. We have a few of those, we'll get into these a little bit more in a few slides. But these are communication devices on it. So we use an iPad to put words on here for students who have challenges using their speech. So some of the things we have on there, this one here has a black guard on there for some of our students who have challenges with fine motor. And we have a couple of different versions. One of you has a bilingual version that has Spanish and English. One of you has a high-contrast version that has black for some of our students who have vision challenges. So we'll talk a little bit more and maybe play with those in just a few minutes. We do have some students who use eye-gaze technology. That's at some of our highest, I would say, some of our highest tech items that we have out there for students who have challenges using their hands and aren't able to touch items. They use their eyes to control things. Okay, to the next one? Do you want to sit here?
Yes. So Kristin talked about this a little bit, but part of what we do, because it is mandated by IDEA, is that we provide training. It's mandated in the IEP and it's part of just what we have to do. So we train school staff and we train families. But when we talk about families, we're talking about, you know, grandma and the babysitter. We can train the daycare providers. Or if students have, like a private therapist, we can also invite them. So we're really proud that this year, we have worked really hard to expand our training opportunities and we have used Infinitec, which is a coalition of special education professionals. And we have used their platform to be able to provide on-demand trainings for parents so they can do them on their own time. Previously, and we still do, provide live virtual training, so we have a training schedule. We train on some systems like twice a month even. Other systems, maybe once a month, it just depends on the need. But this ability with Infinitec allows parents to train on their own time, which has been, you know, really huge. We train on everything from AAC through like Read and Write, which is our Universal Design for Learning. We have some of those things offered in KICUP as self-paced as well for our staff. So we do tons and tons of training. And then this is where some of the fun gets going. We do 3D printing and toy adapting. When we're talking about 3D printing, we can buy something like this from a company called Communicate AT for a hundred and eighty-five dollars. We can 3D print this for sixty-six cents. So that's one of the things that we print. They're on a lot of your iPads there. And it allows students to be able to get their fingers or guide their fingers into places in the iPad so that they don't slide. Sometimes you'll see kids touch an iPad and they slide. And so that kind of prevents that. One of the other things that we can do are, we can 3D print switches. There's a switch up there somewhere with a heart on it, I think. Those switches, we can 3D print them for a dollar seven, but they cost seventy-five dollars from AbleNet. Yeah, it's kind of crazy. There's a toy up there, it's a sloth toy. It costs about thirty-five dollars from Amazon. Or if your kid is done playing with it, you can pull it out of their toy box and it costs you nothing, which is, I think, how we got that one. And then the cord to adapt it is eighty-nine cents. So if we pick things up from grad sales or donation, we can switch adapt something for eighty-nine cents. Or we can pay enabling devices a hundred and ten dollars for it. We did 3D print some wands for modeling communication devices, yep. We, different sizes for different needs. We can use those on a communication device to highlight a particular cell, whether that is a high-tech device or one of those low-tech communication flip books. Those flip books are nice. Our devices can't leave the country for obvious reasons. And so we have students who need to take their words with them. So we can provide them a low-tech version of their words to take with them. I always say, you know, the water table and the pool are great places to communicate, terrible places to have an iPad. So that's another option for when our students are doing things like that. We also, if you can see, I don't know if you can see it, we were able to print teeny tiny little mini versions of our iPads and our switches that we hung on a Christmas tree. We 3D printed them and they are doll size. So we can put them in centers, like play centers, imaginary play centers with the Barbie dolls or the doll toys to just have some representation of all of our students. So that's pretty cool. This is one of the toys we switch-adapted. He was purchased, he was purchased from Walgreens a couple of days after Christmas for seventy-five percent off, so he was about four dollars. And I switch-adapted him, I think, just this morning. And so it's, yeah, go ahead and push it. Isn't he cute? We find that a lot of switch-adapted toys are hard to find that are respectful of age. A lot of the toys we find are going to be little toys, Fisher-Price, and there it's a sloth or it's, you know, a babyish toy. But we have students, you know, in high school and at STEPS who still require to be able to access things, you know, for entertainment or for cause and effect learning. And so this is a nice way for us to be able to do that very cost-effectively. I think I adapted him in about five or ten minutes this morning with, you know, some wire snippers and a seam ripper and a needle and thread. So those are some of the things that we're able to do and it's pretty cool. We also have a bubble machine. This bubble machine, you can press it if you want, is going to make some bubbles. That bubble machine, if we were to purchase it, would probably be probably between like sixty-five and seventy dollars. I'm guessing we got that bubble machine at Five Below, so for five dollars or below and eighty-nine cents to switch adapt it with the cord.
And lastly, we'll move into a newer initiative in our department. Within the past two years, we have moved to a tiered system for our communication supports for our students that need it. We did start initially in the preschool with our students there and we've since moved it district-wide this year. But what we found is that with the limited number of people that we had in our department, we were doing a lot of managing of equipment and we really wanted to get equipment in students' hands faster, especially those students that needed it, who were struggling to communicate with their speech. So we use this approach for kind of three main reasons. For time, so that staff is spending less time away from students in meetings. And also our time, so we can be focusing, instead on just getting technology out, we can focus on the training piece and making sure everybody knows how to use it, the implementation. We also chose one system so that it's a bit more proficient, so that people get good at using one system. And we just want to get, research shows that using a communication system that you have in front of you should be done quickly and that we shouldn't delay getting that in students' hands because we know if students can't communicate, it can be very frustrating. And so what we have in front of you is three devices, I believe, similar to this. We have these again all over our district. But when we go high-tech, you have those communication devices in front of you. And so you can do things like, we are going to show one example. So you could do things like, we can customize them for students. So like, for instance, we could say, you could, what your name is. So if you go on the My button on the, close to the top line, do you see someone familiar in there? Dr. Tally? On the My button? Oh, we better turn it up. So we customized that one with Dr. Tally's name and his picture. But we can customize those systems, try it again so we can hear. Oh, yeah. So we customized that one. But these systems, at their full level, have four to five thousand words in them. So they, they're very robust and teach our kids lots of vocabulary.
I don't know why it's being so quiet.
Oh, that's okay, that's okay. And so we can customize those with different voices, different pictures, what students really like.
Right, and we're able to customize the pronunciations and we're also able to change the pictures to individually meet student needs. So what's really nice about these is that we really.
My name is Dr. Tally.
There you are. Okay, so we thought we'd have a little bit of fun, just a few minutes of fun, and see if you can find something that explains the weather today. What did you think about the weather today? Anything out there that you could communicate about what you thought about the weather today? Anything you find?
Love.
Ooh, loved the weather, that was great. I agree, I agree.
You like it?
Good, good.
If you don't like it.
It was good? Yeah, I would agree, it was absolutely, almost perfect. Makes you happy? It was beautiful today, wasn't it? Play, like to play. I definitely took a walk outside today. So it was a good day to be outside and walk. Okay, well, do you have any questions for our department? We're very, we were very excited and proud to be able to share what we do. Because sometimes we feel like we're, we're small and we're in office and we like, we're glad we were able to explain to you what we do.
So I think we're going to wait till the end to have questions.
Okay.
Now for some of our student achievement data. You can see that similar to our learners without IEPs, the achievement of our students with disabilities has remained consistent. We continue to look at resources that will result in making more growth in order to close the achievement gap. Our SAT scores are similarly consistent, but again, we're always looking to additional resources that can result in increased growth. And our future goals are to continue to monitor our enrollment that continues to grow with a focus on how to best serve our students with complex learning and behavioral needs. We also want to continue to add supportive tools and resources for our diverse learners so they can maximize inclusive opportunities, such as the things that are before you this evening, and continue to practice the fidelity of our research-based curricular resources. And now I will open it up to any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with Ms. Jane.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing all of these, these nice technology pieces for us to try. I think it gives us a better appreciation of how you're working with the students. So thank you for that. A couple of questions I have here. When you mentioned out-of-district students in Slide 4, could you explain who, what, who makes up that, that group and what they're doing?
Sure. So these are all students that have IEPs, so they have an identified disability. And despite our best efforts in the district, we cannot offer them enough support. They need to have an intensive level of need and support that we cannot sustain here in the district. And so we find a, typically a private and often therapeutic day-school environment that is able to make, meet the students' needs. And we fund that tuition and, and fund that transportation and monitor that situation very closely. And every year, we have students that come back to the district. And we celebrate that because that's wonderful. And, and they come back and we, I can't remember one case in which we've had to say, no, this didn't work out, and send them back. So that, once they come back, they are back in District 204. So we monitor that very closely.
Okay, great. That's, that was exactly my next, my follow-up, so thank you. The other phrase that you used like in Slide 9 and earlier is specific learning disability. If you could just explain that a little bit more.
Sure. A specific learning disability would include challenges such as dyslexia, dysgraphia, dyscalculia, things that either affect a student's ability to, in the areas of written expression, in the areas of math, or the areas of reading. And so we take each of those. So specific learning disability covers all of those areas. And so we, we specify that individual need in the IEP. And then we have goals and objectives that address those targeted areas. And then we have those curricular resources that give the students additional support.
Thank you so much for that. Ms. Osborne, I had the privilege of meeting with you a few years ago and hearing, hearing the robust, robust program that we have for our, our, our early-age students, which you reviewed today and is extraordinary. At that time, I don't believe we had classes in Graham and Georgetown. Was that, is that recent?
We've had the classrooms at Graham probably for five years at least.
Okay.
And then our classrooms at Georgetown used to be at Gomber. They just moved to another building in the district.
Okay, great. And how, how does it work in terms of like, because I, I know when you're under one building, you can function differently and then you have classrooms in two other buildings. Are you able to bring staff together at certain points? Or do you travel and meet with staff in those two buildings to ensure?
I do do some traveling, but I also rely on the staff that are at the elementary schools in terms of the principal and the student service coordinator at Graham, as well as the principal and student service coordinator at Georgetown. But in terms of the staff, they are, we bring them all together at least once a month. So we're all kind of under the same roof, doing some individual professional development as well as just having collaborative discussions about instruction and processes and procedures at the preschool.
Excellent. I, I'm always pleased to hear that we are being recognized for the outstanding work that you, you guys are all doing. And at many of the state and national conferences that we get to attend, early, early education is so emphasized. And many of our peer districts don't have a program like we do. And so I just feel like we're leaders in many ways in this area and all due to you and your staff and what you're doing there. So thank you for that. And sorry, just a few more questions. Regarding the technology, so once you identify that a student might benefit from a certain technology, then that stays in the classroom, are we rotating this throughout the district? How, how do you manage the logistics of that?
It is based on student need. So it is, the, all the equipment that we have is specific for a student. And we keep a database. It stays with that student because very likely it then becomes part of their programming and their IEP. And once it becomes part of their IEP, they need to have access to that unless the team decides through a review of data that the student no longer needs it. So it does follow them. A big piece of what we do, and our technician also that's not here today, is that record-keeping piece.
Yeah, I, I would imagine that's a lot to keep track of, yeah. So that was just something I was interested in knowing more about. And I guess to Slide number 25, to bullet point number two, continuing to add supportive tools and resources, what's on the wish list? If you were, if you were to have a tool that you think would really benefit these students, what, what would that be? And if, and I apologize for not sending this question earlier, but it just came to mind in terms of like, are there new tools for all three, for all three areas if?
So there is a tool called a Glowforge, similar to a 3D printer. 3D printer prints from filament, so it prints from the ground up. A Glowforge is a laser cutter. And it will allow us to cut like see-through plexiglass key guards, all sorts of like blocks and, and stuff like that. That's on our, kind of on our wish list, but we could always do with more iPads. Every day, more iPads.
All of the assistive technology, the training and the conferences that specialists go to and as well as the equipment is paid for out of the IDEA grant. So we set aside a certain amount of money every year and try to stay within. And it's hard to predict because you have a lot of move-in students. Again, the destination district component of moving into the district. And, and then some of the devices are, you know, the things that we make are sometimes pennies, are very under a dollar. But some of the devices in, that are well over, several thousand dollars that we're putting just for one student.
A lot of the things we did not bring today, right? Because they're in student hands and we buy them specifically for individual students, you know, can be $10,000, right? So, so we, we buy for individual students.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Rising.
And let's hope the federal government fully funds the IDEA grant. As, talk to your legislators, have them fund that IDEA grant because they're not fully funding it. I, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you, Dr. CPO, for the update on student services. Ms. Osborne, you know my feelings about the preschool. I absolutely love it. Proud snail parent. Many years ago, though. And then assistive technology, instructional technology, amazing. My kids only had ring cards that were PBIS ring cards. And that, I mean, that's the only thing they had back then. That's all there was, I think. So I mean, even something like this, because both my daughters had IEPs, you know, and especially with speech, I mean, this is incredible. And there wasn't to this extent. So this is just amazing, especially with all the ESL students we have and, you know, in the growing number of students with disabilities and IEPs that we have too. So wonderful work. Just thank you so much. I yielded my time.
Ms. Dunning.
This, these tools, resiliency, self-confidence, and independence, and the ability to communicate. There's just nothing more important for a student to feel that empowerment in the classroom. And that ability that you, you're able to provide, and this, this shows how important these resources are. That's why it's so important for you to bring, to bring these and demonstrate so that we could even, you know, allow Dr. Tally to, for the public to even hear that. Because if you're not working with it every day, then you don't understand the power of something like this. So thank you so much for, for helping demonstrate so that we can understand the, the power that this technology provides. Just a couple of quick questions. When students, when students enter, we had a number of preschool stu- are the, help me understand, are the, where we have the 724 preschool, those are, are preschool students? That's not determining how many may need special assistance or receive special services?
So that was 724 enrolled altogether.
Okay.
And then the breakdown was the number, I believe we had 266 students with special needs having an IEP. So that was kind of why I did a little bit of, of the breakdown of the students who are enrolled.
And how, how do, how are we able to make that determin- determination? Because being able to do it so early so that resources can be provided from the very beginning is so critical. How does that, how does that happen?
So we have many students coming out of the Early Intervention System in the state of Illinois. And they come to us and we're, we're required by law to take a look at the needs that they have and determine whether or not they would be eligible for special education services in the public school system? At three, yes. And so then we are actually doing an eval, we're doing an evaluation to determine, to look at all those developmental areas and to do, to determine if there are any needs based on our evaluation.
Perfect. Thank you for that illumination because I just wasn't familiar. And then I, the number of the qualifications of our teachers, that is wonderful to have that commitment to work with, you know, students with various needs. I'm so blown away by the qualifications and that professionalism of our students, of our, of our staff working with our students. So thank you so much for finding the best. Thank you for the staff for coming and wanting to pour into our students the best possible. And then the professional development. The opportunities, did I hear correctly that there are opportunities that are provided for personnel that aren't just staff? So for caregivers?
Yeah, that's part of actually IEPs, is that we're required to write if parents do require training for, for different areas. So that is an area of discussion and consideration that we have at IEP meetings and it's part of IDEA, the Special Ed Law.
That's, that's great. I didn't, I didn't know that. Thank you so much. This is, this is wonderful. So truly appreciate it.
Mr. Krubis.
Three points I want to make. Slide 21 first. The fiscal responsibility aspect of this, you know, we, you were kind of, excuse me. Nobody got hurt, right? The, the fiscal responsibility aspect of it, you know, you were mentioning we could buy this or we can print it ourselves and look at the savings. Last meeting we had, we were talking about the hundreds of millions of dollars we're spending. But ultimately, it comes down to that individual purchase at the end of the day. And what are we doing to, to be frugal with it? And I know there's a lot of other school districts that would have just bought it and been done with it. And so I appreciate trying to stretch the dollar as much as we can to try to, you know, help our teacher, staff, and students. So that's awesome. Page eight, Slide eight. This talks about our numbers. These are just like the hard numbers. If we were to normalize this for the changes in the student population, this would paint a different picture with the, the white demographic decreasing, with the Asian population increasing. This might say a different picture on which demographic is using the program more or less over time. So I think this is important. But if we were to say, is it, if, if one population is using the program more, we can't really tell if the numbers are going across, absolutely across the district. How are they changing relative to their changing in the population overall? That's just a comment. And then page five is another kind of shout-out, is this no due process hearings? Like wow, I mean, that's, that's pretty good. And if we were to break it down into, we had this many students who have this many IEPs and we had this many meetings to determine all of the changes and, and kind of walk through the whole process. And yet, we went through all this, did all this work, and people were happy overall with it. And so that's, kudos to everybody involved in getting there. But that's something that can get lost in the, in the shuffle here. But no due process hearings, that's, that's a huge win. So thank you for that. Need to take the devices away from you?
Right, yeah. Miss Fastic. Thank you for all of this presentation and sharing these with us. I just have a couple small questions. The first is, we have thirty, about 3,100 special education students. And there are three and a half of you working on, two and a half of you to provide assistive technology. So I should have asked this in advance, but what, what rough percentage of our students with special education needs require assistive technology to some degree?
I think, I think it'd be hard to tell because there are things that don't require our level of expertise to, because assistive technology is so broad. For example, those pictures, picture supports and things like that, they don't necessarily need us. We do provide the system that they use to make picture supports, but we wouldn't know that. That's something that might be able to be pulled through Embrace, but I am not, I honestly am not sure. I think it's much larger than we even know. We work on a referral system to request our support, similar to our behavior team. So if a team needs our support, that's one way that they can get it. But I think there is a box on, on the IEP that needs to be checked, but it doesn't always need our level of expertise to decide that.
And I think in addition, sometimes, I don't know if that always identi-, like just the number doesn't always identify how much of us there is, right? Because some students need a lot of AT support. So even if we looked at those numbers, it wouldn't necessarily explain how much support certain kids.
And I think it's as good as, you're talking about how great the staff is. We do a lot of coaching in what we do. So if we do a really nice job, especially with communication and empowering our speech and language pathologists who are on the ground with those students a lot, more than we can be at two and a half. If we can be sure that they do a lot of the trainings that we have offered and we really coach them up, then they can do a lot of the things that we can do with implementation. So we work a lot in that way, in that coaching capacity.
It's a super, super collaboration happening here for our students. So congratulations on that. And thank you for doing that for our students. It's amazing that we have so many different things here. Also, the level of creativity just blows my mind. I, I think that's really cool.
This is the smallest. This is the smallest of examples that we could bring. I mean, we could have brought, I think we have over 3,000 pieces of equipment in our inventory.
Well, thank you for having that for our students and providing them with that responsibly, like Mr. Krubis said. And then I think I had one other question. Students, how do your very youngest students use these kinds of things? Because, right, there's the word there also and then there's a picture. So are your very youngest students, Ms. Osborne, able to pick it up pretty quickly?
We work closely together with Lindsay at the preschool.
Okay.
And we have many students that are using that kind of high-tech device.
Yeah.
And many of our students are picking up very quickly. I'm so impressed sometimes when I go in the classroom and the kids are going through the different levels and answering questions.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing.
And then my last question is, you said about fifty, fifty-seven percent of the preschool kids are English language learners. Is, again, a question that would have been helpful ahead of time, but is the goal to keep them consistently learning, just on an upward trajectory to kindergarten? Because I imagine there's not enough time to graduate them out of that program, depending on their level.
Typically, they typically do not graduate out of preschool because they are assessed right when they also transition to kindergarten.
Okay.
We're just really looking at building those basic foundational skills for them and trying to make sure that their family at home is using their home language. And so we've been really working hard on that. And as our population has grown, we've understood better what we're supposed to be doing. So I think we've been doing a very good job with it.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. It was a very interesting presentation and I think as you heard from everyone, we appreciate seeing all those devices. I don't know, in my mind, I had this picture of where you guys are working. Looks like Santa's workshop, like with all these, little tinker and make some really cool things, yeah. Maybe it was that snowman that got me on that. But I, I agree that like creativity is like amazing. And on top of that cost reduction, it's like, wow, I can't ask for anything more than that. I would say too, IPEF has grants that are super easy to fill out. And I was on the grant committee for several years. And I would encourage you, if you have some nugget of something, like put one in. I mean, it's only a couple of paragraphs you have to write. And they love awarding those to really creative ideas, so I would encourage that. I also had a question about, you said the preschool had grown to 745, like after the charts were made or whatever. And that you regularly are having, you know, a significant, you know, a chunk of students come in that are new. Is there a limit, like a waitlist or like?
For our tuition students, we only accept tuition students up until December. So our tuition students are usually pretty stable. What we're looking at is those students transitioning out of early intervention when they turn three years old. So we are typically getting those kids up and all year long. And so we're increasing our class sizes until the end of the year, then we transition for the next year.
So there's no limit to?
There is in terms of class sizes, yeah. So in terms of the number of students who are in a blended classroom is set. It always has to be a certain ratio for the state. A number of the students who are in our, and when I say blended classroom, I mean a general education classroom with students receiving special education services in that setting. So there's a, a number for that as well. There's a number for students who are in more of our, a smaller self-contained settings. So there are limits. We are not quite at that limit yet, but we're growing.
Okay.
But to your question as to whether there can be a waitlist for students with disabilities, there cannot.
There cannot, okay.
So we can't say, well, we're, we're full. If it's a student with a disability, they, they have the right to come in.
Okay, yeah, interesting. I've been on the board a long time, but I learn stuff every time. It's like, I also was gonna say, I sub, you know, sometimes in the schools and I'm often, I sign up to be a TA and help students that have special needs. And I was absolutely astounded with the little girl I was working with. She, I think she was in kindergarten and she had one of these devices. And it was amazing. And she was non-verbal, but what, how she could use that thing and all those different cells. I mean, it was extremely impressive. And the other thing I thought was super cool was the scissors. Because I was also working with kids that had trouble dexterity with cutting. And, and so they had created some scissors that kind of, like they didn't have to squeeze them or whatever. They could squeeze them a different way. And it was like obvious how important and thrilled they were when they got to cut that paper. And so I can imagine what that device would do for these students that are in those, integrated in those classrooms and see everyone else whipping through and cutting out the little, you know, forms and stuff and being able to have something that helps them. It really touched me. So thank you for all of your thoughtfulness, creativity, and cost savings for our district. So really an honor to hear all about what was going on, so thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just say one, I, I just want to say one thing, or maybe two. The, I, I did get to see the Santa's workshop.
Couple of times, a couple of times.
But what the assistive technology, it gives students the opportunity to be engaged fully with their, with their peers. And that's what we want. Just recently, we had our spelling bee competition and we had a non-verbal student who used his device and he came in fourth.
He didn't know that.
You didn't know that, did you? It was tremendous.
What school, may I ask what school?
I can't remember. I'm sorry. I, I just can't remember what, oh, wait, wait, I can tell you, Skellon. And so it was a wonderful process that he was able to compete and the device allowed him to be part of the process. So well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
No. Can't make reading.
Everyone wants their toy.
All right, our last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. Does anyone have any items? We had, we-
We attended one.
Oh, yes. Our division meeting was this past week. And we were honored to receive a governance award for the work that we do to make sure that we're performing and executing the role as board members in a proper and efficient and standard way. And we can apply for it every other year. And Ms. Fostick took the lead of putting in our application this time. And we are thrilled that we got selected again. And we're awarded this plaque, which we'll take our picture right after the meeting. But thank you for everyone, because that, that was something that all of us had to work together to accomplish. And thank you to Ms. Fostick for capturing all of that information. It's not a simple application either.
I was gonna say, that's not just to fill out your application. There are metrics that you have to meet to receive that governance award.
I didn't bring the statistic about how many had received it this year, but it was maybe-
I think there were maybe eight.
Yeah, I was gonna say seven or eight.
We're one of-
One of eight in DuPage?
DuPage, yeah. Yeah. All right.
We were the only, we were the only, there's no, there was no district that was close to us in proximity that received it either, I will say.
That's right.
And we have, we've had a record of having it for many years. So it's like, it's certainly an honor to, to be recognized for that. So, all right. Any other items? With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Nope, okay. All right, let's get a picture real quick before people start moving around.